Good evening. Welcome to the October 15th Lebanon City Council meeting. Our first order of business will be the pledge allegiance. All right, move on to the roll call members. Mike Kincaid.
Keith Campbell.
Sandra Jasonowski.
Dick Robertson.
John Copeland is excused tonight.
Sierra Messenger.
Robert Hawkins.
Thank you.
Move on to the approval amendments for our previous meetings, and we have a few. So we have July 8th, July 22nd, August 12th, August 26th, November or September 9th, and September 23rd. So any changes or additions to those minutes? Motion approved? Motion approved. Is there a second? Second from Rob. I'll hear a say aye. As opposed, those are approved. All right, moving to old business. First item up here is ordinance 2024-14, obviously related as well to 2024-15. These are concerning the water and wastewater regulated territories. These ordinances are on second reading, so I'll have Rob read it and it'll open for discussion.
Thank you, Mayor Council ordinance 2024-14 again concerns an ordinance establishing a water regulated territory for the city of Lebanon. Pursuant to Indiana law, Indiana Code 369218 permits the city to exercise powers related to water utility service granted under the Indiana Code in areas within four miles outside of its corporate boundaries. Whereas the city wishes to establish a regulated territory for the regulation of a water utility service that includes areas within its corporate limits and also extends up to four miles outside its corporate boundaries as permitted by Indiana law, excluding any current customer being served by another water utility or within the boundaries of another municipality. On September 4, 2024, the Lebanon Utility Board adopted Resolution 2024-07 recommending that this council adopt an ordinance establishing the water regulated territory as defined in the ordinance. Therefore, be it resolved, the findings, determinations, and preambles are made findings and determinations by this council. The city hereby consents to the establishment of a water regulated territory for the purposes of providing or regulating the provisions of water utility service within certain areas inside and outside its corporate boundaries. The water regulated territory is defined and established as those areas within its current, including pocket areas and future corporate limits and generally the entirety of center township, including portions of Jefferson and Washington townships, but no more than four miles outside the city's corporate boundaries as depicted in Exhibit A. Upon the adoption of this ordinance and approval by the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission, or the IURC, the city shall have the exclusive authority to provide or regulate water utility service in the water regulated territory. Upon adoption of this ordinance and approval by the IURC, other utilities are prohibited from providing water utility service in the water regulated territory unless such other utility request and obtains the permission of this city. This ordinance does not mandate the city extend to service or extend service to areas where technically or financially are not feasible. Second, it doesn't prevent the city from authorizing another utility to provide service in the water regulated territory. And third, it does not prevent the use of onsite water systems where the city does not currently have facilities available. Further, Section 7 says, "No in-service user shall permit a connection to water utility service in the water regulated territory provided by another water utility service provider unless such utility service provider has requested and again obtained the permission of the city." The city shall pursue any and all necessary approvals for the implementation, the effectiveness, and enforcement of this ordinance. Any dispute between the city and another utility regarding the provision of the water regulated territory shall be submitted to the IURC for any dispute resolution. The water regulated territory may be amended by an ordinance amending the water regulated territory attached as Exhibit A, subject to the approval of the IURC, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption and as required by regulatory approval.
Thank you, Rob. So before we opened up for public comment, I just want to make, read something really quick. I want to explain what this is and what this isn't. So first, what this is not. This is not an annexation. All annexations last nine years during my, have been at the request of the property owners. No one's been annexed against their will during my time as mayor. It's also not been our policy to not extend city utilities outside of city limits. So if you don't want Lebanon utilities, then don't ask to be annexed into the city. Two, this is not a zoning takeover. This has not changed any zoning control or taken any zoning control away from the county. Unlike other cities, we do not have a two-mile planning jurisdiction, so properties must be within city limits to fall under city planning jurisdiction. So all properties, even if you're not within the city, if you're not within the city limits currently, all the properties in this water service territory would still be under county planning jurisdiction. Three, it is not a mandate to connect, as you heard in the ordinance. Lebanon Utilities has never and has no plans to force citizens to connect to our utility system. Every utility in the state of Indiana, including ones that may or may not be created in the future, are given authority by the state legislature to mandate connections in specific situations. It is not a blanket unrestricted mandate, but Lebanon Utilities has a track record proving that we do not exercise this authority. Four, is not a guarantee of service. As I mentioned earlier in the annexations, you know, utilities are extended as development occurs. The city planning for the future does not mean that we will be extending lines out into this area where they may not be part of the city and where utilities are not wanted or needed. Some of this area may not develop for many decades in the future. If that's the case, no utilities will be extended. And finally, fifth, this is not set in stone. As Rob clearly read in the ordinance, the ordinance clearly outlines that there is a process to cede territory to another utility or provider if circumstances indicate that is the best option for ratepayers. These territories can be shifted and changed over time, just as we've done in the past and just as we are doing tonight. Finally, what this is, this is simply a planning jurisdiction for the city utilities that allows us to look out and plan for the city and our city utilities' future over the next 25 to 50 years into the future. So with that, if there's any public comment, please come forward, station name for the record, keep comments to two, three minutes if possible, and also, if possible, try not to repeat yourself. Do it in the background.
Okay. So my name is Britt Reese, and Daniel Morrison is here with me, and she's got some maps to pass out to you. And you're saying what this is and what this is not, and you're saying to take your word. And so, going to go through a little example that kind of emphasizes some of that in terms of things that are factual. Got some series of questions. You can choose not to answer them. We all know the answers, so they'll just be rhetorical questions. So my first question is, do you acknowledge that this is the IADC's LEAP concept map? Yes. So when you look at this map, has the entirety of this map and all associated parcels been annexed into the city of Lebanon? And does the city of Lebanon have jurisdiction over the entirety of the area represented here? No, you do not. The next map. So do you acknowledge that this is the city zoning map as per the GIS service and information provided on the city of Lebanon's Planning Department website? That's where it's from. You also acknowledge that this also represents your corporate boundaries in this map, right? Your corporate boundaries are here on your website, on your zoning map. Not here. So when you take the two and you look at your ordinance that you have as your document that you're voting on tonight, you see that what you're calling and claiming as your corporate boundaries is actually the LEAP concept map. It's not actually your corporate boundaries. So when we look at this, you know, clearly not Lebanon, Lebanon, yet you have a document and a document, docket that you're voting on that has false information in it. So how can you pass this ordinance in compliance with the law or even ethically when you are fully aware that what you're voting on has blatant false representation of a material fact? That is not your corporate boundaries. So how can you vote on that tonight when that's in your documentation saying that's your corporate boundaries?
I've prepared a statement tonight. That way I don't get too far off the rails here. But my name is Bud Wirey, and I live at 6053 West, 200 South, Lebman, Indiana. Under this current leadership of Rhino Republicans, every single rural Hoosier is now under threat having their way of life destroyed. When the agents of government can reach into the public coffers and pull out as much money as required to pay people to harm their friends and neighbors, no man is free and no castle is safe. It is beyond sad to see that many in this body have cast away their concerns for those in their community and have replaced them with loyalties to an authoritarian government that only seeks to enrich itself. While we can understand why Mayor Matt Gentry drives to push this territory since it enriches his family by making their property easier to develop, what is the rest of your motivations? Does this body not respect people's right to be free at government overreach? Does this body not respect people's right to representation? And where are the citizens that support this proposal? Or does this body only seek to serve itself? If you would, please look into the cameras when you vote. Every citizen of this area deserves to look into your eyes while you do so.
My name is Willie Morris. I live in 6984, North Caldwell Road. In the election time year in the government for governor and president, I hear a lot of things about planning. At your last meeting, I heard about planning. Planning for the future is a good idea. But I'd like to know what the plans are because is it for future development of more warehousing and manufacturing? Is it, are you planning on building more out for developing more subdivisions in the country that most people here does not want? But I know people are buying land out there by, to buy, develop more land out there, sorry, to develop subdivisions out there, and they need the water and the sewage to do that. Plus, then you can annex that area and you can make the new laws for that area for the, not Boone County laws, but make it for Lebanon laws, make it easier for the subdivision of that land. I moved here 30 years ago to get away from subdivisions. And there's another, and I saw on your next plan, you've got a new one moving further north. I know we're having problems getting water for the Lily plant. Are you planning on using eminent domain to build these sewers and these water lines and possibly use eminent domain to also, well, dig wells up north into the aquifer to get your water? I know the, getting the water from citizens is going to be very expensive to get, and you're going to look for lower cost to help the bottom line. And I have no problems, if a farmer wants to sell their land and develop and make a subdivision there, that's their, that's their right. But I don't want to make it easier for people who have money to make more money to take out the little guys who wants to keep their land, the three, four, five acres, or the farmers who has 800, 900 acres. It's just not good for our community, and I'd like to know what the plan is before we do something, because a plan is good, but what is the plan? Thank you.
Jeremy Garst, I'm trying to, I would just like some explanation on the motivation behind all this. I don't find it necessary, and I find it actually might be risky, because not only with the water, but with the wastewater, which you're going to be addressing after this, there's, there's codes on the wells and on the, on the septic systems. I think it works just fine, and I don't see what, I don't understand what the motivation would be to trying to regulate beyond the city boundaries, and particularly because that's putting, putting all your eggs in one basket. The city of Lebanon is basically out of, the Lebanon Utilities is out of water for new development, and so I think it's important that we have the wells in the country and not bother with those rather than try to regulate what is, what is needless to be regulated.
Brian Daggy, 2005 West, 250 North, Lebanon. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. I guess a couple of questions and comments. One, I understand legislatively you have been given the ability to expand this wastewater territory like this. My question would be, given everything in the scope of what's going on in Boone County and within Lebanon the last couple of years, why you want to take on this much more on your plate? You're not able to serve current things being developed right here now locally. I know there's plans to address that, but those aren't set up yet and there's nothing guaranteed. You've had property going down the I-65 corridor toward Anson for a number of years and have not made attempts to serve that with wastewater or water utilities. It looks like some of those existing things ought to be addressed before this would come up. Given the current things going on in the county, the county is looking, I know, doing some things as well, I would encourage you to cooperate with the county and not just expand your territory and block somebody else out. If another entity came along and said, "We want to provide service," say at the I-65 and 47 corridor, which you're taking in here, you have the ability to give them permission. The question is, will you? I'd like an answer to that right now. Would you have somebody showed up in the next six months and said, "We have plans to do that"?
I mean, again, we don't extend it to the outside city limits, so if that's not in city limits.
You know how much money it would cost for somebody to develop an independent utility outside in the country?
I understand.
I'm estimating $100 million, somewhere around there. If we spent, if somebody came in and was spending $100 million to set up some type of utility, all the county taxes would go up like crazy because we, the funding would need to come from somewhere. I understand that.
Residents of the county as well.
We, yeah, we're, I mean, we live in the county, and so if the county wanted to do that.
My question is a simple one. I understand the costs and difficulties. We, 10 years ago, wouldn't have thought that the LEAP district, Lily, and all these, those immense things were going on. We would use those same arguments against that. My question is very simple. If somebody proposed that, would you give them permission? Or would you say no, and we want to annex you before we let you do it? That's one of the concerns we have, is that this, while isn't currently a zoning or annexation type change, it will lead to that. I understand you need the ability to do planning, but this goes beyond, I think, what you have, ought to be trying to do right now, and I would encourage you to look at the county and cooperate with them right before you take this territory on.
So if it's not in the best interest of the Lebanon Utilities ratepayers, that would not make sense for us to do that?
So you're saying you would give permission for somebody else to do it?
I don't see, if it's, if it's not in the interest of Lebanon ratepayers, there isn't a reason to do that.
Thank you.
For the comments?
Hi, I'm Jeanette Manning. I have a, I go, I'm the finance lead for a church that's in the blue territory. And I just have a couple of questions. You said that there is no mandate to hook up. Can you give me the exact legal place that says that? I want the, I could not find, I looked online quite a bit. I was on the IURC website for quite a bit. I could not find the spot where it said outside the city jurisdiction that nobody would require to be hooked up. So if you could give me that, that would be great.
It's in the ordinance that was read.
Specifically, I listened, but I didn't hear it. Okay. And then my other question would be, do, does the ability to make decisions on water providers in that area affect wells or septic systems? Or is that not part of your jurisdiction? Like if I, if we would need an update to our well system or whatever, would that be something that you guys would have to weigh in on because you now, we're now in your water territory? Or is that something that is outside the scope of this?
So in Section 6, it says, "The ordinance does not want, I mandate the city to extend service to areas where not technically or financially not feasible, prevent the city from authorizing another utility to provide service in the regulated water territory, or prevent the use of onsite water systems which be well, where the city does not currently have facilities available." So that's, that's where all that is.
Define, I'm going to try to define onsite water facility or systems as a well?
It is.
Right.
That's, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what that means.
I just want to make sure that, that in the future, if you guys have expanded out into that area and somebody is on a well, that they aren't required to come to you for approval.
Or not, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Right now is.
There are actually, there are actually houses in town.
I understand, annexation, I understand. I was just saying, I was just saying outside of this current jurisdiction.
Yeah, which we have not done in the past and have no plans to do in the future.
But you do have that ability to.
That's, that's the authority that the state legislature gives all utilities. So any utility, city or county.
Okay. That's not, wait, that's not exactly what you said.
So anything that he's promising, if you read Indiana Code, they can do pretty much anything that they want.
That's, that's what, that's what I was asking is I was not, it was not clear, and we need to be able to plan if that we need to set aside money that should be going to ministry, that we need to set aside money that at some point, if their main, if the main starts coming our way, that we need to put aside money to know that mandated hookups may happen.
That's not always, that's not a silly decision the city makes. Sometimes it's the health department says, usually more it's on the wastewater side, that if a septic system is failing and there's a sewer system nearby, that's when they may say, "Hey, you need to hook up that instead of redoing a septic system." But there are, there are houses in Lebanon today that are still on wells because they don't.
I understand that. I'm just saying from our financial planning point, we need to know if that's going to become a future issue.
Again, we've not made it to that city. For the comment.
Hello, my name's Steve Winning. I live at 3265 North 25 East. I tried to access the exhibit and couldn't get it online today, but just trying to listen to what's going on, to get a handle on what's going on. It sounds to me basically like you're trying to preserve your jurisdiction in the future. You know, I like the fact that you mentioned some of the things that have been a custom of the utilities in the city as far as when you mandate, when you don't mandate hookups. And, you know, just with everything that's been going on, I know there's a lot of anxiety because sometimes the information is not fully out there and you kind of wonder what's going on. And one of the things is, you know, Lebanon is ripe for development. And once Eli Lilly gets going, there's going to be all sorts of developers coming to put in ancillary facilities to support Lilly. There's going to be high-end housing coming in. One of my concerns is, yes, the water will be going out when those things be going in, but I want to make sure that the city takes full advantage of the law that allows them to have impact fees on developers. I don't think that the residents should be funding an infrastructure that pays for a developer's profit, profits. So with that in mind, you know, I just want to say I hope that you keep that in mind because that's the best way to keep money in the county with the residents to do the spending. But also, I worked for years with the state legislature and wrote many laws, and one of the things I've always told representatives is if there's any ambiguity in Indiana, the law, or in this case, the ordinance, is read by the document itself. There is no legislative history. So it's the document itself, which sets the parameters of what you can and can't do. I like the assurances, but if you want to calm some of the fears, I guess I would put some of those assurances in the ordinance. The ordinance can always be amended in the future, but just with everything that's been going on, the he said, she said stuff, it would be nice if there was a little more clarity that was put into it just so that people knew what's going on and what's not going on. That's my comments.
Can you repeat your name?
I do want to let you know too, we do have, so we have availability, road, and park impact fees, all, so we are making sure that development does pay for development. Yep.
Can I get your name again, sir?
Sir, what was your name again? I'm sorry, she wanted.
Thank you.
For the comment.
I'm Don Kenna. I'm a Lebanon city resident. I also own property in the county, and I have one point to make. And it's about honesty and integrity. When y'all planned the exit north of town, the property owners found out that the road went right through their house when they went to the meeting. So there's no notification beforehand. When you approved the Waterford project and the exit, the exit went right through my house on the other side of the road. I was not notified. We should notify all the property owners that are happening that's going to be under this plan. If we can't notify them, we're not being honest with everybody, and it's a point of integrity. No is a one-syllable sentence, and sometimes it's best to say no. A very wise, wealthy man told me one time, "Just because you can, doesn't mean you should." That's all I have to say.
For the comment.
Good evening, Council. Mike Broach, I am a Lebanon County resident. I'm here tonight, I want to read a notice that you guys have, I think, all received today. I want to make sure that the audience is aware that you guys have received this today. This is a notice of remonstrance concerning proposed ordinances, trespassing right of the people to create and regulate entities to handle their public business. I, one of the people, as seen in the Indiana Constitution, Article 1, Section 1. Republican inform, sui juris, do serve you, the Lebanon City Common Council members, Dick Robertson, Keith Campbell, John Copeland, Robert Hawkins, Sandra Jasonowski, Mike Kincaid, and Sierra Messinger. This notice, by necessity, that you provide immediate due care. Please take notice that all political power is inherent in the people and that the people have a right to lawfully instruct their government. Maxims defined in Black's Law Dictionary, First Edition, as principles of law, universally admitted and granted without proof, argument, or discourse, are referenced here in from a categorized compilation entitled "A Selection of Maxims of Law" by Charles A. Weisman. Indiana Constitution, Article 1, Section 1, inherent rights. Inherent rights. We declare that all people are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain inalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and that all power is inherent in the people. Maximum of law 51O. All political power is inherent in the people by decree of God. Thus, none can exist except and derived from them. Indiana Constitution, Article 1, Section 31. Right of Assemblage and Petition. No law shall restrain any of the inhabitants of the state from assembling together in a peaceable manner to consult for their common good nor from instructing their representatives. Please take further notice that all entities, such as the city of Lebanon, are created with the permission of the people. And they're obligated to act in good faith and with due regard solely for the people's benefit. Maximum of law 50C. Good faith demands that what is agreed upon shall be done. Maximum of law 71J. The welfare of the people is the supreme law. Please take further notice that the people in the constitutions reserve to themselves all private rights, such as the right of assembly for their common good, the right of association, the right to create and/or choose to contract with other entities at their sole discretion, to handle their public business. One entity created by the permission of the people, such as the city of Lebanon or any other government entity, has no grant of authority by the people in the constitutions to block, bypass, or interfere with the people's private right to have another entity, such as a sewer district or some other entity, handle their public business. Granted authority must be used exactly as specified within the bounds of the grant. Furthermore, if the constitutions do not expressly grant such authority, it does not exist. See evidence below. Maximum of law 52I. That which is granted or reserved in a certain specified form must be taken as it is granted and will not be permitted to be made the subject of any adjustment or compensation on the part of the grantee. Maximum of law 43B. The expression of one thing is the exclusion of another. Please show me in the Indiana constitution where the private rights may be violated by any entity created by permission of the people. Failure to show this constitutional provision means that you understand and you agree that private rights cannot be violated by such entities. Please take final notice that my constitutionally sound wish, order, and demand, which you are bound by oath to follow unless you can prove by way of sworn affidavit that I have misconstrued the Indiana constitution or the maxims of law, is that you provide remedy by immediately ceasing and desisting the attack on the people's private rights and that you refrain from passing any ordinances that violate the people's private rights as doing so would be an unofficial and void act performed without constitutional authority. If you disagree with any of the information or claims in this notice, you may submit in writing an affidavit sworn under penalty of perjury within five days of the receipt of this notice. The evidence or the constitutional provision that declares that private rights may be violated or by tacit acquiescence, you agree to all claims herein. And this notice shall stand as evidence against you in all court's record that no court may rehear this matter and that if remedy, as instructed, is not given, the people to whom you swore an oath will recognize it as being done purposefully with knowledge, malice, and intent. All responses not submitted under penalty of perjury are non-responses. Shall consent to all claims herein. Any response from an attorney not directly addressed by this notice will be considered a non-response. Maximum of law 11S. One lawfully commanded must be obeyed. This notice is sent to you in the peace and love of Jesus Christ that you will give due care to the people who hold all political power. Thank you.
Okay, it's been a long time since I've done this. Good evening, I'm Robin Vermillion. I'm at 615 North Jamison Street. I live in a historic house. I've been a healthcare worker for 27 years. Praise God, I'm still doing it. My concerns are for my seniors. My seniors often go to doctor's appointments and maybe getting over prescribed medicine. The other concern I have is for the homeless population. We unfortunately have a large homeless population in our community. I have friends that rent. Fortunately, we own our house. Our house is built in 1900. So we get all these calls of people wanting to purchase our home, these developers or something like that. We've lived here for 12 years from Bloomington and we're proud to call this place home. However, when I get a phone call from one of my friends that their rent is increased and they don't have any place to go or they need some food or they need clothing, that is my concern. So you guys all have a decision. I don't understand all this legal stuff, even though I have a criminology degree. But here's the thing. I want you guys to think about your grandparents. I want you to think about people that are homeless. The average population of a homeless person is not what you would think. They're 30, they're going to school, or they're working. I worked in a homeless shelter overnight shifts in Bloomington. So I ask that you guys consider the people that are in our community. So I'm volunteering at an event and it is a clothing drive, but we have a huge need for that sort of thing. We have a huge need for our food. And so while all this is going on, I'm having a hard time understanding how that there's people in our community that are homeless. Thank you very much, have a good evening.
For the comments?
So my name is Jim Love. I currently live at 3150 North State Road 52. And here we are again. So here we are again, looking down the barrel of government overreach by people that we have no control over, deciding the fate of where we live and what we do. So I was thinking about this. I get the opportunity to drive a lot for the work I do. You get a lot of chances to think about stuff when you're driving because you've got nothing else better to do. And I think about what we are all getting ready to exhibit here is big national government at work in our county. What do I mean by that? Well, so in the national government scene, if you have a solution that you really want, but the problem doesn't match it, what do you do? You make the problem bigger, right? So we have a problem in Lebanon where we evidently don't have enough water to support what we got going on in the first place, which is why we have developers that have a cost of money, something that you guys in the government don't necessarily understand. I know there's some of you folks here on the board who do understand that, who've had businesses in Lebanon. And when you have to get up every morning and you have to cover a few hundred dollars' worth of interest before you unlock your doors, that's a big deal. It's not a big deal for government, is it? Big government doesn't care about the cost of money. So we have developers that are worried about the cost of money because they have projects sitting on the back burner right now that we can't let them go forward with. Yet what we want to do now is we want to expand Lebanon's water and sewage territory so that we have a bigger footprint. So then in the future, that we have more people that we can serve. Heck, we can't even serve the people we got. But what does that do? The good thing about that is that makes the problem bigger. So now we can cry more. We can say, oh, woe is me, Lebanon's really out of water now. We don't have enough. That would be like if my wife and I went and took out a third credit card, ran the first two up, and then stood around and whined about it. You know what people would say about that? They'd say, those two are stupid. That's what they would say about it. They'd say, those guys are idiots. They overspent their two first credit cards and now they're standing around whining because they want something done. That's exactly what we're talking about here, folks. You've got a problem. We know we have a problem. You already have ground that's annexed that you can't serve. You've got ground south on 52 that you've annexed that you can't even serve. So why in the world, except for the fact that you need fire hydrants to pee on, and the more fire hydrants you pee on and the bigger the circle you pee on them, it makes it easier for when people like Cushman Wakefield go out and they start lying to seniors and old people and people that own homes and they'll say, well, you know, this is already in Lebanon's water and sewer district. It's only a matter of time before you get annexed in. And although that may not be true, that's a very easy tale to tell. And the Cushman Wakefield people were very, very skillful at knowing how far they could dance up to the line of legality but not step over it. And that's why they got the job. So as we look at some of these things, okay, we're going to create this water district. And what's that really going to do for the people? Not a darn thing. But what it will do is it goes out and it plays capture the flag. It drops a flag and it says, this is Lebanon's territory. We intend to take this someday and we are going to take this someday. So it's just one of those classic cases of we make up a false story and perpetuate it. You guys tried to push this through at the last meeting. But as usual, the documents that you had were so flawed and so messed up and the story that you were given, it was much like the story. Remember the night you guys, some of you are just new to the board, didn't get to participate in this. But the night that we gave eight million gallons of water to Lilly, that was pretty awesome, right? That was how it was explained, that we were going to give eight million gallons of water. It meant 800,000 gallons of water. But instead, we gave them eight million. About $7.2 million gallons difference. But that's what was voted on. When I brought that to the attention of the council, I was told, you know what we meant. You know what we meant doesn't necessarily hold up in some of these deals. So once again, you guys are voting on flawed, incorrect information and an assumption that what you're trying to do is going to be good for the community. But at the end of the day, it's only good to help build the resume of some of our top politicians. Thank you.
For the comment?
Hi again. How are y'all? I told you this was going to happen. You didn't listen. Where is our developer?
Can you state your name for the record, please?
Jody Stewart.
Address?
Lebanon, Indiana. You know where I live. Boy, you guys are really messing up. Really messing up. You know, you got public safety issues. Where is our developer? Does he not want to hear the public and what's going on? I told you to tell the IDC to leave and you didn't listen. Didn't listen. Okay, so what I found out when I researched, why is the mic not on? When I did my research about Baker Tilly, our financer, they're not licensed CPAs, did you know that? Within the United States. What are you trying to pull? What's the IDC trying to pull? Did you know that, Mr. Mayor?
Further comment or?
No, I'm waiting for an answer.
This isn't a back and forth, so...
You don't have an answer. Mr. Shine, how about you? Did you know? I mean, you guys were trying to push this through last week. You had bad maps. I think Sander brought that up. You did the exact same thing during the leak meetings when you were passing this whole project plan. And you didn't listen to the public. And the same people are back up here again. You need to tell the IDC and you need to tell Mr. Franzen that myself and my mother oppose this project. And he will know what I'm talking about. Thank you.
For the comment?
Tim Byer, one of the county commissioners. So $100 million figure was thrown out. I'm not really sure what that's referring to. But the other thing that I would just encourage is there was a lot of back and forth over the past two or three weeks between the county and the city. And I would just encourage before you vote on this, really more towards the wastewater angle, but that that continue. Thanks.
For the comment?
I'm Janet McConnell. I live at 2239 Elizaville Road. I'm still considered a foreigner even though I moved here in 1964 with my parents. When we moved here, my parents came from Cleveland and they loved Lebanon because of the fertile soil. My mother's greatest gift was planting fruit trees in the backyard. I just had to cut down the last one that was over 50 years old and I've just replanted them. I've lived in Los Angeles. I've lived in a place that's called the wonderful place of Los Angeles that has no water and watched people talk about not having water. We're very blessed that we live in a place that there is rain. But the one thing that I see that we're missing in Lebanon is we have the greatest opportunity to become the salad bowl of the Midwest instead of the pharmaceutical society of the Midwest. This place could boom and be put on the map because we wouldn't have to get our food from Los Angeles. I looked up some statistics of pharmaceutical companies closing down in other states after big buildings had been built. And you know, you can't get back farmland after you put concrete on it. And we have Stuckey's Farm and we have, I can't remember the other one, in Frankfurt. We have a new place that's in Zionsville that's growing hydrophonic salad and it's employing special needs students. What a way to put us on the map. Not saying we can't have other people come here. But when we bring things here that aren't who we are, it doesn't make sense. Make us a place on the map, not because we're another big building, but because people can get food from us. In the last three years, through the very little bit of apple trees that I have, I have fed three or four families that had no fresh vegetables. Did it this summer in a very little square space. So as you're thinking about this development, let's think outside of the box of what Lebanon was about, what brought my family here and what pleased my mother to have six tenths of an acre that she thought from coming from Cleveland was really cool. And think about the fact that Los Angeles is in trouble because they decided to build big and they don't have water. Thank you.
Further comment? Saying done? Discussion from council?
Justice.
Sure.
As far as the map goes and the area that we're planning, how fast or soon are we planning to run water and sewage or sewer lines there? How soon?
It would be development-based. So there's no plans at all. I mean, it's strictly is for us to, as we think about long-term, it's make sure we're sizing it properly. So there, I mean, there aren't... It's not like we're starting tomorrow. We're not doing that. It's based on development.
And we don't have any development in mind at this time?
No.
Then I have an issue then. If it's just a plan like Mr. Jacob said last time, why do we have to do an ordinance on just a plan? Why do we need that at this time?
Because that's what IURC requires us to do.
But if we're not planning on doing anything there, it looks like we're blocking out others? Is that what we're doing?
There's no utilities in these areas. There's no utilities in the area, in these areas.
But we're blocking others from coming in just in case. I'm looking at this, and I'm looking like at Thorntown. If they wanted to come over to this, and they wanted to hook up to these that we did, and we say, "Well, no, you're not in our five-year plan. You're in our 10-year plan." But we don't approve because we have to approve somebody else to do it. We don't approve somebody else to do it, so they're out of luck. I'm just looking at a lot of the issues, and I have to say, I agree with everybody that we need more assurances in this ordinance before I can vote on it, a positive vote. We need more assurances so that they don't have to worry about their property as far as the mandates and stuff, because the mandate just says the city, but it doesn't say the people. And we need to...
And we talked about this last time, right? And I tried to explain, a city council today, right, can't pass an ordinance that limits future city councils, right? So four years from now, right, if whoever's still on here, or the debate's totally different, right, they may change their mind, and they can't be bound by whatever we pass today. And so there isn't a reason to put it in there because we can't bind future councils, right? Every decisions are made by the council. That's how the legislation, that's how legislative process works, yeah. So we can't put in the ordinance that we can't do that, right? That's the authority that the state legislature gives all utilities. And so it's a decision that we make to exercise that or not, and again, we have a track record proving we don't do that. But you can't put anything in this ordinance that binds future councils.
I think everybody's forgetting too, that the IURC has to approve this from even happening. I mean, even, they're the regulatory body for utilities. So if they look at the information and think it's unfair, then they're not going to let us, they wouldn't let somebody do it. That's what they do.
Yeah, government never approves stuff.
This is something that at this local level, there's issues going on between the county and the city, and it needs to get figured out, and you need to stay in your jurisdiction. So we know that they have the authority or the final say, but it shouldn't even have to get there. This should be something here. We should be able to solve, and it starts with staying in your jurisdiction.
Out of the IURC, I thought we were having talks about that.
We are from a, we have been from the electric side, and we are out on the water wastewater side as well, but they still have jurisdiction over utility territories.
And the one person that was up said that this ordinance is its own law. It's not bound by others or whatever. And I don't know who said that, but one person did say that this one, you know, each ordinance is its own. It's not going to have other. So if we did get more assurances in there for the people, then it looks like we, they could request, or we could request a change, or the next board could request a change if they don't like the way we have it. Give us the ability to get everybody assured, you know, because they're not, I don't, is there anybody here that is for this? Okay. I don't... But I don't, I can't, in all honesty, I can't vote yes when everybody that I see in all these notices we were sent today, I can't vote yes at this time without them being assured.
Sandra, I understand the rights of the man to have a big room of people full here yelling at you, saying all these things, right? And I get that's... And so I understand, and that's what they want, right? They want you to feel that pressure, but here's the thing, right? You were elected by the...
It's okay. It's okay.
Sandra, you were elected by the citizens of Lebanon in District 3, right? And so, same as me, I was elected by the city of Lebanon, right? It's all of our duties. It's all of our duties here. Order, please. There's no taxation either for you guys, so... You don't pay city taxes. Sandra, so again, it's our duty to represent what is in the best interest of the city of Lebanon and its residents, right? And part of this process is for us to plan for the future of our utilities. I understand that the people that are not within the city, right, may have opinions that they're upset about, right? I get that. I understand that. But we have to look at what is in the interest of our citizens and our ratepayers, and planning for the future is in their best interest. And that's why we brought it forward to council.
47-65 by reference, that is Boone County, the county jurisdiction, so don't worry about what's happening up there. The landowners who own land up there, and some of them own very large chunks of land, you know, if we want to develop in up there or that area, then that is our thing to deal with. Don't try to come in and act like you're the savior of the county and going to go develop or provide water to 652. It does not impact you. It's not your choice. It's the people who actually live there. And we have representation through the county. So don't make decisions.
We want the county to do it. And they said, he stood up there and said, so I don't understand why you guys feel like you have to stop him. He stood up there and said, "They are already working on it." That is when you guys should all back down.
Yes.
Exactly.
Further discussion with council?
Can we consider...
Order, please. Sandra, go ahead, sir.
So can we consider postponing this until we do have more time to work with the county?
We postponed it once already. We've had discussions. I mean, I gave you the map, the response, and first of all, and also, I would point out, this is the water ordinance, right? The county's not proposing any water utility. They're strictly proposing a sewer territory.
Yes, they are. Why don't you ask them first? They've already discussed it.
They're not proposing a water charter. They're proposing a sewer district. That's different.
It's in the county.
No one can hear you when you're...
We have jurisdiction in terms of what happens to development, so you know what? If we say someone has to put a well in, they put a well in. You come up and put your water line in, oh, welcome to the party. Come, annex into Lebanon. You're just trying to like Jim said, stake out your territory and pee on a water hybrid across the county.
Part of the planning process.
To make a motion here.
Huh?
Are we ready to make a motion?
If there's no further discussion, we can make a motion. Yes, absolutely.
Well, I got one thing is... I just received this map from the commissioners, and they want to build a wastewater plant, or you're thinking about it or researching it, correct? Okay. So I would like to have a little more communication with them to find out, you know, why they want to do it, for one, and how they might do it, but I just think there needs to be a little more conversation with the county people.
I agree.
I think people are misunderstanding because the IURC is, I would have a hard time thinking that the IURC would approve a new utility being built like that when we already have access, we're already right there to be able to serve. It's going to make ratepayers go up if you're, when you're building a brand-new system when we're already there and able to serve.
If there's a new utility, you have Lebanon, so we'll take care of it.
Do you understand how much your taxes would go up if that amount of money needed to fund it?
They have a plan for it. Talk to them, and then you would figure it out. Do you need us to explain it to you the way that you are trying to do it to us, as if we're stupid?
I spoke with some people that work in the utility industry, and they were feeding me information. What size?
Further discussion with council? Order, please. Further discussion?
Are we through with discussion?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2024-14, an ordinance that establishes a water regulated territory for the city of Lebanon, Indiana. And I would ask that, I think it would be best, we probably do a roll call, but...
We have a motion. Is there a second? Second from Sierra. Call the roll, please, ma'am. My clerk.
Mike Encade?
No.
Keith Campbell?
Yes.
Sandra Jasonowski?
No, hard no.
Dick Robertson?
Yes.
Sierra Messenger?
Yes.
Robert Hawkins?
Yes.
Carries?
Carries 4 to 2. Next item up, ordinance 2024-15, wastewater regulated territory. This is also on second reading. Rob, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, ordinance 2024-15 is an ordinance establishing a wastewater regulated territory for the city of Lebanon. Pursuant to Indiana law, Indiana Code 3692336 permits the city to exercise powers related to wastewater service granted by Indiana law in areas within 10 miles outside of its corporate boundaries. The city wishes to establish a regulated territory for the provision and regulation of wastewater utility services in an area that is within 10 miles of its corporate boundaries as permitted by Indiana law, again excluding any customer currently being served by another wastewater utility or within the boundaries of another municipality. That's defined as a wastewater regulated territory. On September 4, 2024, the Lebanon Utility Board adopted Resolution 2024-08 recommending that this council for the city of Lebanon adopt this ordinance establishing the wastewater regulated territory. Therefore, be it resolved, this council finds that the foregoing recitals are incorporated here by reference. The city consents to the establishment of a wastewater regulated territory for the purposes of providing or regulating the provision of wastewater utility services within certain areas outside of the city's corporate boundaries. The wastewater regulated territory is defined and establishes those areas within its customer, including pocket areas and future corporate limits and the entirety of center township, including portions of Jefferson and Washington Townships, but no more than four miles outside of the city's corporate boundaries, as depicted in Exhibit A. Upon adoption of this ordinance and its approval by the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission, defined as IURC, the city shall have the exclusive authority to provide or regulate wastewater utility service in the wastewater regulated territory. Upon adoption of this ordinance and its approval by the IURC, other utilities are prohibited from providing wastewater utility service in the wastewater regulated territory unless such other utility requests and obtains the permission of the city. This ordinance does not, number one, mandate the city extend service to areas where technically or financially not feasible. Two, prevent the city from authorizing another utility to provide service in the wastewater regulated territory. Three, prevent the use of onsite disposal systems where the city does not currently have facilities available. No end user shall permit a connection to wastewater utility service in the wastewater regulated territory provided by any other wastewater utility service provider unless such utility service provider has requested and obtained the permission of the city. The city shall pursue any and all necessary approvals for the implementation, the effectiveness, and the enforcement of this ordinance, including but not limited to seeking the approval of this ordinance by the IURC. Again, any disputes between the city and any other utility regarding the provision of utility service in the wastewater regulated territory shall be submitted to the IURC. The wastewater regulated territory may be amended by an ordinance amending the wastewater regulated territory attached as Exhibit A, subject to the approval of the IURC. And this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption and any other required regulatory approval.
Thank you, Rob. Any public comment concerning ordinance 2024-15? Please state your name for the record.
I'm Berriese, and I'm back up again to emphasize, you just voted through a fraudulent document. Your ordinance, same thing with this one. It's referenced to as your exhibit in the ordinance, and it's attached to the ordinance as a legal document you just approved is fraudulent. You're misrepresenting your corporate boundaries. This does not represent your corporate boundaries, and you are fully aware of it, and you're still blatantly voting it through. So that really says something about this council, that they're okay with that, to not even go back and amend a document to make the map right. Just want to emphasize that.
Tim Byer, one of the county commissioners. I work in the, I work for a utility, sewer utility. A utility at the corner of 65 and 47 would cost somewhere, obviously depend on use, but somewhere in the range of about $2 million.
Commissioner Byer, Commissioner Byer, could you talk through what the county's plan is? Because I think this is more directly related to what... No, I think it's probably, we have a discussion before we talked about it, so I mean...
You should have planned that before you scheduled this for tonight.
Well, we requested the map last week. We received it at 3:57 today, so we haven't had much time to discuss it, so I thought we'd have a discussion.
Yeah, there have been conversations with Jeff and Dick. Obviously, attorneys have talked. You had a meeting with some county representatives at the commissioner meeting, which I said, "Go ahead and have it anyway." And then we talked on Wednesday, and I met with Jeff and Donnie this morning and updated the map and sent it over this afternoon, so. I'd say that's pretty good progress for something that's going to impact maybe half of Boone County. That's pretty good progress over the course of a few weeks.
Yeah, so you've been, since the map you proposed, essentially served, essentially claimed 61% of the entire county is your service territory.
Yeah, I mean, we're talking about 50 years, right?
Yeah. So...
There's also a smaller area on the map, correct?
So you think a $2 million sewer plant will serve the 60% of the entire county?
That's not what I said. I said it was for the intersection of I-65 and State Route 47.
So it's the beginning of a new utility.
Obviously, somebody's not going to build a $100 million plant for something that's going to be 50 years. You kind of phase it in. Plants are expandable.
So, and this is where I'm struggling with... I'm trying to have a discussion with the county commissioner that came to our council meeting. So we, so we're, I guess I understand from, you know, the IURC wants us to regionalize utilities. It's been a huge issue, finding operators, maintaining these systems, right? They're pushing regionalization from a service standpoint, right? You work in this space, you know that. So I guess I'm trying to understand, why is the county wanting to start a utility from scratch and then claiming 60% of the county is your service territory when you literally have nothing today at all?
You have a developer that wants to develop at the intersection of I-65 and State Route 47. We're trying to figure out how to provide sewer service for a developer that wants to develop.
So...
And as a county resident, we want our county and our commissioners to represent us and control this stuff.
Because you've already said we can't get any representation from you guys because we don't live within the city.
I don't think we're, can I, Commissioner Byer, I don't think we're saying you can't. I think we're saying if you guys really want to move down that road and go that way, and you get something established, you know, I'm looking at this ordinance, and I think we can come back and amend this ordinance if you guys move forward and get something established. But at this present time, you've got nothing established, and here we're wanting to try to establish something. If IURC likes it, fine. If they don't like it, then we have to come back to the drawing board, do something different. But I don't think we're in a process, or in a position, we're going to say, "Well, if the county wants to create something..." the county wants to create something up north and creates an area that you can't come back to us and sit down and say, hey, can we talk about, can we amend this ordinance to include, to include this piece that we want to try to take over? Because you could probably serve it, if you could create something up there, you could probably serve it a lot quicker and cheaper, better maybe than we can. You know, because we're, we're not going to go there if we can't serve it feasibly. We're not going to go there.
Then don't, you don't need to.
Don't, please, I'm talking to Commissioner Byer. So, you know, we're, if you guys come up with something, we're not, we're not against you doing something, you know, we're just, because we, we may get another.
You have to come up with something in our town.
We may get another utility come in from the east side or something, and it may be feasible for a developer to, to go to that direction than it would be to come to Lebanon and ask. Yeah, Lebanon would probably like to serve the whole thing in the way down the road. But if somebody comes in tomorrow and they're closer to Zinesville and services, you know, and they're right at the edge of the territory, you know, we're not, utilities are going to say, well, now we're going to run service out there. You know, we're not going to run service out there unless they pay for it. Well, if they, they're not going to come to Lebanon and say, hey, I'm going to pay you $2 billion just for a number to run service out to me when I could go to Zinesville and get it for a million. You know, so are we going to tell them no? Why would we tell them no? We're not going to tell them no.
I guess, I guess the only counter I would have to that is, obviously, something's being worked on now. Why put it in your territory at this point? I mean, you can do it later if that falls through, or.
Have you taken any public action on creating this sewer district?
It, it, it went before the redevelopment commission.
Okay.
And was tabled.
Okay.
And there, no, there's been no meetings since then, public meetings.
Can I ask, how far back did you start working on this project? Because we just heard about it two weeks ago, and if we'd have heard about it, had some communication earlier, we could have, you know, made some changes or whatever.
Right. I mean, some, I think serious discussion was probably within the last six weeks. I mean, there were questions being asked earlier this year, but, I mean, at the sewer utility I work at, we get questions all the time, but they don't go anywhere. So, you know, you start looking at, you start looking at.
You to really get moving on it.
Right.
Okay.
So, I guess another question I have, so, so I know the developer that's looking to develop at the, where you cited. Why did they, he ask me if we would serve them with Lebanon utilities?
Well, I, I don't know. I, I assume probably because you have a water line within about a quarter of a mile, but would be my guess, because they obviously would probably be better be on water service than do wells that would give them more options. So I, I'm just speculating. I haven't asked that question, but that would be my guess.
Other questions for Mr. Byer?
No, sir.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Any additional public comment?
Brian Daggie, I've stated my address before, you know where I'm at. I'll just reiterate what Commissioner Byer's talked about and what I talked about before. The city of Lebanon has an awful lot on their plate right now with things going in the Leap District, with the housing developments that are on hold, with the corridor down 65 and 52. And knowing that the county is looking at a project out there, it would certainly make sense to me, and I would think makes sense to you, if you have common sense, to delay this wastewater ordinance, whether it's for six months, a year. I don't think you'd lose anything in doing that and see what the county comes up with. As Tim said, if that doesn't happen, you can always come back. It seems like it's a waste of time and resources to do this now, knowing there's another proposal out there. In the spirit of cooperation, which I would love to see the city and the county start doing, please delay this vote.
Don Kenner, Lebanon City resident, Boone County property owner. Again, I want to reiterate that it's about honesty and integrity, and if you can't tell those affected about your vote, even if they are in the county, they're your neighbors, and that's not how you treat your neighbor. It's about honesty and integrity and letting everybody know what's going on. Just because you posted in the minutes, I admit, what you've done is legal, but just because it's legal doesn't mean it's right. That's all.
Further comments?
One last thing, I just want to reiterate while I'm up here on the stand so everybody can see that you guys all that just voted for this did so with only one hand. Good job, guys.
Further comments?
My name is Beth Ellen George. I live at 10 North 400 West. I live right in the center of the Leap District. I've been coming to meetings for two years. I have been highly affected by the decisions made by this council. My neighbors have been affected. Our lives have been turned upside down. I don't live in the city limits, Mr. Mayor. I, I, I've been told by you several times in many ways, and these people have been told that really we ought to just shut up, because we don't live in town and we don't pay taxes in town. But the decisions made by this council have had a greater effect on me and people in the county than they have on people in the town. My husband and I, everything around us has been annexed. The state owns on two sides of us. The property we live on is our dream property. We were never moving, but now we know we'll move someday, and we'll probably be glad to move when the time comes, because we've been living in limbo for two years. There's always another sort of a stake or somebody else mowing corn down and drilling for more soil samples. I always wonder, when I come home, how many orange vests are going to be out there today? It's a hard way to live when you've always lived in the country and you've always had peace. We don't have peace anymore, and we're going to have less of it moving forward with Eli Lilly coming in. I'm old enough to remember when the county and the city worked together. The friendly city was the friendly county. We don't have that anymore. I really appreciate Sandra and Mike for your courage to say no. In the fall of '22, I sent a heartfelt, tearful email to every single person sitting up here except the new members. I guess that would be Sandra. I got a response from Mr. Robertson and Mr. Kincaid, and it was a response saying thank you for your email. That's it. I was at that time urging you to reconsider this large annexation and the, the issues that would be involved in it. But when I see this map that you have, it extends beyond Western Boone. It goes north of 47. It goes out to 600 East. It goes as far south as 300 South. I had, about went blind looking at this thing on the computer, trying to see those boundaries. It's just like Jim Lev said, you're marking your territory, future planning. It could be there are negotiations going on right now with large property owners, because that's what happened out west of town and north of town, and then the smaller people had no idea what was happening, and it was a done deal. It was a done deal before we even knew. So when you tell us, those of us who live in the county, that we don't really have a say, you don't know what that feels like. We don't have a say because we don't pay taxes, but we are more affected, more affected currently than the people in town. But moving forward, everyone in Boone County is going to be affected by this. Is there going to be any rural area left? I'm sorry, I never get up in a meeting like this and say anything. This is a really big deal for me, but I could not stay in my seat. The disrespect that has been shown to those of us who live in the county is stunning. I just can't get over it. I just can't over, I've lived in this county 56 years, and I remember moving here. My dad was a farmer, and he was so thrilled to be able to come here and farm this black dirt. But this black dirt is going to be covered with asphalt very soon, and it's heartbreaking to me. That's all I've got.
I'm back. This is a government-forced, taxpayer-funded project with no representation. They've said it, I've said it, everybody's said it. Everybody out here is opposed, and you guys just keep passing this. It's heartless. It really is. And the one thing that concerns me is that you keep moving forward and you're not taking care of the things that need to be taken care of. You've sandwiched me between two pieces of city property. A week ago, I had to call public service. Nobody knew who needed to respond. Was it city or was it county? I have a problem with that. I have a coun, I, I live in the country, and there were trespassers on the property next to me, and my city police could not do their duties. So the sheriff had to send out somebody finally on the third attempt, and my situation did not get resolved, because the excuse I got, we have no city judge. Were we supposed to have a city judge in January? Why don't we have a seated city judge? You need to slow down. You need to dot your i's, and you need to cross your t's, because you haven't. You all just passed something like we're at sad, and you don't even have the right documents. You have somebody financing our county and our, our money that is not even a licensed CPA. They are front for international investors. You better think about that, what you're doing. It's called embezzling the taxpayers' money. You're not, I'm not finished with you yet. I just want you to know that. I'm not finished. I have paperwork. Mr. Francine knows it. So I just want you to know, you better be careful what you're passing. Prison doesn't look real good.
I just want to let you guys know, Mike Broach, every yes vote will be primaried. Every one of you will have a primary challenger, so you better get your campaign hats on.
Further comments?
Jackie Morris, 6984 North Caldwell. I'm a foreigner here, trans, transient, but we've lived here for about 25, 30 years. We came from very populated subdivision. We love the country. But I listen to the hearts of these people, and I, I so appreciate the two of you that also listen to the people. And I'm not sure where the rest of you are listening to, but I, I have some questions. I have some questions other than, and I don't want to get into calling names or anything else, but my question is this, and this Lilly thing is a disaster because of the water that is not secured. And we, we're not ignorant of all the paper, all the media that's reported on this, how you could not obtain water from Lafayette, how you could not obtain water from Indianapolis, how you think you might be getting water from Cicero, how you think you might be, how you think you might be, but you haven't. But we do kind of feel this, or at least I do in general, and I think the reason that we are here, other than the fact that you're, we know that you'll eventually annex us to be a city, we think you're going to tap into our system, our aquifers, to get the water you need. Therefore, all the stuff that you started with, Mayor, about how we're not going to, how we're not going to, how we're not going to, that's all good, but what you didn't say is when you tap into that aquifer, which you will already have, that you will drain many of the wells, forcing us then to take your program. That, I think, is the big concern here, that you are forcing this to happen. If you can tell me differently, then please do, but I need to know right here that you guys are not expanding the, and my, I have two questions. First question is, can you please tell us that you are not expanding this to tap into and gain access to our water?
We're not.
You're not?
We're not. No, there's, there's no water, there's not enough water there.
Okay. My second question is, so that's, that's on the records.
I've learned a lot, yes.
That's a verbal, on the records, you are not tapping into our water system.
They've done the studies, there's not enough water there to, would justify it.
Okay. My next question is, why are you trying to come out this far in the county? What is your goal, and don't say future planning? Who are you trying to block from getting this?
We're trying to look out 50 years in the future of where that utilities may need to be.
That's a political answer. Who are you trying to block now?
There is, that, we're not trying to block anybody, because if there's a future development or county starts one.
Okay.
We could, we could, we could enter an agreement and we could work with the county.
Okay, so let's.
So again, this doesn't, this, again, like I said, this doesn't set it in stone.
Okay, so i, if that's the case, if that's the case, then why are four of the six of you opposed to waiting until things are actually aligned so that you have the blessing of the people that you're, you guys aren't necessarily representing the county, but you are representing people. That's your job. You got elected, right? So you're supposed to be representatives of the people, and this group of people, I know you, they're not, you're not representing them, but they've got legitimate high concerns, and they need to be heard, and it doesn't have to be all business and politics. We have to get back to listening to the people and not listening to our wallets. Thank you.
Victoria Westler, 6906 North Caldwell Road. I only have two questions for you, and you don't have to answer them to me verbally, but I think you need to answer them in your heads and in your heart. Number one, what's the rush all about? What's the rush? Why can't you take a couple of months to sit down and talk with the county and work out a plan? But I think more importantly, what are you collectively and individually so afraid of that pushing this vote through tonight is your only choice? Answer that.
Further comment? Council discussion?
Yeah, I'm going to go with the same, I have the same opinions as I did before. I don't see the rush. I agree with them. I don't really want to vote on this until we actually. I don't really want to vote on this until we actually do have a majority vote from the people we represent. And I know they're not in my district, but they are the people that, you know, a lot of them have people that they know that did vote for us. So right now, I don't agree with rushing this through. I think we should work with the city and the county, you know, the county and the city together, even a few more months. So I'm going to make a motion to table this.
So Sandra, if we, if you want to have a discussion with the county, do you think it's in our best interest to have leverage in that discussion or to where we have to just accept whatever they want to do?
I'm sorry, but you, you said leverage for what?
Yeah, I mean, so if we pass this ordinance, right, it gives us the ability to negotiate and have those discussions with the county, right, because we've set the territory, right? And so if they come up with a plan and want to serve territory, they, there's cooperation there, right, that we can then work through, right? But if we don't do this, right, there's, there's nothing there that gives us any way for to make them, I mean, they were starting this discussion, starting this territory, they didn't talk to us, right? They didn't come talk to us, they didn't want to work with us, right? They wanted, they wanted to start a-
Order please, order please.
So we, I mean, they, I mean, they were going to start up a new utility, I mean, fairly close to ours, right? So I mean, what are we, I mean-
But they're in the county, that's their, they're in the county, though.
The county doesn't have a utility, they don't have any territory.
But that's not our area, that's theirs, so I see what-
They were not even public about it, so we started this process.
But, and you know, it's, it's the county, so they're looking at that area because they're the county. But if, I, I just want to see the city and the county working together.
You're confusing the county and a sewer district territory, right? Just because a county exists, right, doesn't mean they automatically have a sewer district territory.
So that's in our boundaries? That's in our boundaries?
There's, there's no, there's no boundaries, there's no jurisdiction at all today, at all. There's no, no one, it's not under any jurisdiction, utility jurisdiction today.
So any of that blue is not county then?
That's what's the proposed territory for us out along the future.
But I mean, that is the county's area, though. That's, that's considered county.
Yes, we're not annexing, we're not taking over zoning jurisdiction. It's, it's literally about the long-term planning of the utility.
Yeah, I, I'm still inclined to say no, just because I, I agree, we need more assurance, we need more people that want to understand what we're doing. I don't understand the rush either. And I'm going to mo, I'm going to make the motion that we table this.
Yes, I- Hold it.
Is there further discussion?
I, I do believe we need to have more conversation with the county, but I will say that everybody up here is operating in good faith. Now, I'm not trying to change anybody's mind, I'm just, I'm just pointing out fact. Everything is in good faith and we can agree to disagree, but I do have, I do want, have more communication with the county. And I think they should have gotten with us before they started doing their thing, but we are where we are.
But before we do anything, I think we need to both birch together and work it out and then I'd be happy to agree to something like that.
We need to have a conversation and find out, you know, what they want to do and so forth, because we are neighbors. So, but I just want to reiterate that everybody up here is operating in good faith. I have no discussion other than the fact that I think we ought to, I, I want to make a motion that we approve this ordinance, 2415, the ordinance to establish a wastewater regulatory territory for City at Lebanon. Let's do it on a roll call vote as well, but quiet please. Also to, also for us to keep in mind in that in our ordinance, we allow the opportunity to change our ordinance. Should the county come up with something that looks good and we could work together somehow, maybe we could come back later and change this ordinance. But I think we need to send this on down to I U R C and get their approval.
There's motions, there are seconds? No second?
Robert Sanders' motion.
Okay. Oh, second from Rob.
But I made a motion, I was going to table it and I got cut off.
There wasn't a second from it.
I didn't, nobody asked.
Motion, second, is there further discussion from counsel?
Pardon me?
Is there further discussion from counsel?
No.
All right, there was a roll call requested on the vote.
Mike Kincaid. Keith Campbell. No, I can't hear you. Sandra Jasonowski. Dick Robertson.
Yes.
John Cook. Deera Messenger. Rob Hawkins.
Yes.
It's tied.
In the event of a tie, the mayor breaks the tie, so I'll be voting yes on this ordinance.
Of course he does.
So this is getting sent to every news outlet about how you just cut off one of your council members and belittled her and did not let her follow the motion I have been reporting.
Next up is resolution 2021-
I tried to perjure-
Order please.
Going your way.
Next up-
Let the world know Matt's history.
Next up is resolution 2021 dash 19, excuse, 2024 dash 19, small purchase policy. Kevin, you still here?
I am working, tabling this item.
Okay. All right, that includes old business from what I have.
Can we have a brief recess?
Yeah, absolutely, let's recess for five minutes.
So we're on new business. There was a merit board presentation discussion. We will take that up at our next meeting. That's been requested to table by Chief Batts. So next item will be item B, which is the Park Impact Fee Non-Reverting Fund Spending Request, which is the purchase of 1313 South Beck Street. Derek Horn.
Sorry, I had some, you all had the files I sent you in terms of supporting documentation for these requests. But unfortunately, our connections are not working in this room, so I cannot pull stuff up and show you. So we'll have to kind of talk through what is in that, in those files that I sent. If you have any questions, we can, I can certainly get those asked answered for you. Sorry. So the first one on the table tonight is the acquisition of 1313 South Beck Street. And this just kind of fell into our laps. It actually is something John and I have been working together. John was contacted through Facebook Messenger, I believe, is how this all started, kind of randomly enough. And then John contacted me, knowing that I had kind of worked through some other property acquisitions for the city over the years. And was able to make a few phone calls and meet with these people, get a purchase agreement in front of them, and get the ball rolling. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. So 1313 South Beck Street is directly adjacent to Abner Longley Park. So with that being, in the situation that it is, and expanding the park system, we put our heads together and figure, and discussed how we were going to fund this. And park impact fees became the answer. So the park impact fees can be used for the expansion of existing park facilities, which this is. And the reason we're coming to you tonight is as the infrastructure agency and the park impact fee ordinance that was adopted, that is you all. So we are coming to you to ask for permission to spend park impact fee on the property acquisition for 1313 South Beck Street. I do have one appraisal back, and that appraisal is 125, so it's 3,000 over the purchase agreement price. The other one should be in this week, and I don't anticipate having a problem with it either. So if we get approval for the funding, we can move pretty quickly on this one, get it closed. The one thing, we will have to put our heads together and figure out what the funding looks like, is the demolition of the property. We cannot use park impact fees for the demolition, so we won't close for another month or so. At the very quick, at the very earliest, so we'll have some time to come back and discuss what a demolition request would look like. But, you know, over other projects we've dealt with, you're talking about probably 30 or $40,000. That's probably on the high side.
So just process wise, can we approve the, essentially kind of give a approval of the, to enter into the purchase agreement and do that? But then would we need to appropriate your special operation because we don't budget park impact fees? Or do we have to do? And we haven't ever, I think we haven't spent these parking back fees yet. We're okay, okay, because it's a local fund, so we don't have to do a state notice or anything like that. Okay, okay.
And I believe there's 160,000-ish from this year collected, and I think the total account looks like 800,000 or 600,000, I believe. 660, yeah.
Any questions, concerns? If the other appraisal comes back, do we have to like a not to exceed number? Or do we want to like have a, because we'll have to, because it's the average of two appraisals, right? It's the maximum price?
Good question, Mayor. I didn't even think about that on what the, because we'll have closing costs involved. We will also have a small real estate fee to pay. But I don't know that we can use that money, should be able to for all fees. Okay. I don't have that number in front of me, but I would say if we, if we put a not to exceed of...
140, 135?
Say 140 just to be safe. Yeah, they will, we'll come, it'll be 130, it'll be less than 130, I'm sure. If it creeps up over that, I would maybe hit pause and come back and then present that, just to make sure that everybody's on the same page. Yeah, so we did, we did a survey, which will be taken out of there, the closing costs and the real estate fees, so, yeah.
And just, just to, council, if you don't know exactly where that is, it's kind of the one right on the corner. As like the one way leaving out from football, it's kind of that one that's right there on the corner that's, would be frankly, it's like kind of...
So that's going to be used to enhance the park and make it larger?
Yeah, it would help us improve the entrance to it and help us kind of open it up more publicly.
We can pull up the Elmo maybe, so you can see this?
Might work here.
Roll room?
No, that's not helpful.
Yeah.
No, it's all right, don't worry about it. It's okay.
I think, yeah, sorry, one more. It is, it is in the southwest corner of the football field area, essentially, just as he described. Beck Street in and Beck Street out, you're, you're kind of, this is on an island out there.
Any further questions, concerns? So essentially, the request would be to appropriate not to exceed $140,000 for the purchase of 113 South Beck Street. Is that fair? 1313, yes, sorry. Any public comment concerning that? Is there a motion? Not to exceed 140? Okay, motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Does it post? All right, thank you, Derek. Thank you. All right, don't go anywhere. Next will be the planning and zoning non-reverting fund spending request for the purchase of Midland Trace Railroad Corridor.
Yep, so this is another property acquisition request, the Midland Trace. So if, I tried to give you kind of a history for those of you who have not heard of this rail corridor, turning into a rail trail. But the Midland Trace connects, basically, used to connect Ladoga all the way to Noblesville and on east from there. And the Midland Trace was abandoned, just as like the Big Four rail corridor was abandoned through Lebanon. As we have kind of worked through the Big Four connectivity in the county at this point, the Midland Trace is kind of the next rail trail to take a look at. Westfield is aggressively moving towards the Boone County line as we speak. They are building a new transportation facility on 32. I think it's right by Eagle Town and Julietville mixed up, but right in that area. And that trail is, they are building to that facility with some other land sales that are going on right now for development. So they are actively moving this way. Over the last 12 months, we've even engaged with Westfield to talk about planning studies and what that looks like as we start to move over to that area as well. So in, in the documentation that I gave you prior to the meeting, you'll see a lot of planning documents that reference the Midland Trace. All the way from the state visionary system, which is, is pretty important to pay attention to. The DNR, outdoor activity planning studies, Lebanon planning studies, and even county planning studies identify the Midland Trace as a rail corridor to become a trail. So the Friends of Boone County Trails own several pieces of ground, starting on the Boone-Hamilton County line, moving to the west. So some of it's under control in the Zionsville jurisdiction. This became available, just kind of another thing that fell into our laps, it's, it's another opportunity that's, that, you know. I, I think the best way to put it is an opportunity so we do not repeat the mistakes back in the mid 80s when we did not take ownership of the Big Four. Some of you know that story, some of you don't, but the city had an opportunity to buy the rail corridor for a good chunk of what is in Boone County. I believe that number was like $65,000, that the leadership at the time, trails weren't even talked about, you know. So it's, it's not throwing anybody under the bus, but they decided just that that was not advantageous to the city at the time. And I believe when the Governor Daniels started to give money to the rail trail groups, I believe the acquisition of the Big Four Trail in the county was over $600,000. So as these chunks become available, I feel it's important to pursue them and, and purchase them. Not because development's going to happen tomorrow, five years, 10 years, we, we don't know, but when the time comes, we know it's going to come. We will, we will have pieces of this already in place. So this is a mile section. I'm working on getting appraisals right now. This is not the easiest one to get appraised, just because it's, it's a little bit unique. But I think we'll, we'll come to that. I, I can tell you that when we applied for the next level trails grant to extend the, the Big Four Trail from 300 up to Saran Plant Road. When the Friends of Boone County Trails donated that section to us, it was roughly four miles, and it appraised for $400,000. So it was roughly 100,000 an acre is what that came back at, and we were able to use that as our match. So just to give you an idea of what, of what that ground can be worth, this one isn't as put together as, as the Big Four. It's currently overgrown. I have pictures I'd love to show you, but I can't. It's in the folder that you have. But it is, it is pretty overgrown, so it would take some, obviously manicuring to get it to a trail point. But that's not what we're talking about tonight. We're just simply talking about securing the land. And the, the, the purchase agreement price is, is very reasonable, is 5,500 an acre is what they're asking for, is five acres.
So the total amount there?
Total amount is... And as we talked, this was another one, as we talked through, how to fund it, you know, what's that, what does that look like? What's the path of least resistance? Where is there money available? The Planning and Zoning Non-Reverting Fund became the, the leading candidate to purchase that with. We, at one time in the planning department, we had a property acquisition line, and for one reason or another, that, you know, got shifted and, and, and was used in other budget lines. But with that non-reverting fund, it made a whole lot of sense just to make the request to, to spend that money out of that fund.
Any questions on that from council?
Question. Is Zionsville participating in it? It's because part of a Go-Through Union Township, they're, they're going to participate through?
They do, yeah. That, that is all identified in their master planning as well. We were actually, I was a former member of the, of the Friends of Boone County Trails. But over the last decade, they were, they were discussing that. And I think their priorities have kind of shifted a little bit and slowed down because of the Wolf Run acquisition that they have. So as they're working through that process, the nature preserve right now, that's taking a lot of their resources. But they certainly are going to make a, a, a aggressive effort to be a part of the Midland Trace as well.
I'm just going to ask another question, just about the other trail, Big Four Trail, a minute. Headed south, we're, we're still waiting on the development that's going to participate on a lot of that, correct?
Yes, correct.
And is there still a portion that's still going to have a county issue?
One, one holdout still, yes.
One holdout, yeah. And the county, is the county helping us, helping any of the trail systems to try to, to help with that case?
No.
Okay, I just saw that.
The properties in center township, correct?
Correct, yes.
Any questions on, further questions from council?
So this is, I'd probably, again, point out the closing costs, and that, that would be very small. So probably like 40, not to exceed $40,000.
And we were, since we don't have the appraisal, yeah, we probably also need to make a contingent upon two appraisals as well from that.
Both purchase agreements, the ones we're discussing tonight are contingent upon that, and they're both in the, in the purchase.
Any public comment?
Actually, you know what? I'm sorry, I'm going to back up a little bit, because the struggles I'm having with the appraisals here, I might have to go to a commercial appraiser, and that might cost me a little bit more. I think those are like 3,000 bucks a piece instead of like 500 from a residential appraiser. So if we could bump that up to like 45,000, I think that would cover me.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed. Any other questions? Okay, would, intend motion then to appropriate a not to exceed amount of $45,000 for the purchase of the Midland Trace Railroad between 500 East and 600 East? Pending appraisals show that the price is within that, within reason, so.
Make a motion, we approve the 45,000 out of the non-reverting fund for the Midland Trace Railroad Corridor parcel.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Does it post? All right, that's approved. All right, thank you, Derek.
Thank you very much.
All right, next will be, Rob, you still want to do the, Chief want to do the fire code resolution still?
This is for the additional, for the AC.
Figured you were still here, so I thought you wanted to do it, so. Yep, all right, next will be Resolution 2024-21, additional appropriation from Coet Fire. Chief?
This is for HVAC improvements to Station 12. As with Station 11, the HVAC AC is nearing end of life, and this is for a total replacement of that unit.
We've been talking about this for months, right?
Yes, this is a totally separate issue from Station 11, but yes, it's to a point, we have to do something about it.
Hung on for a little bit, and then the last kind of heat wave killed it.
Right.
Rob, can you read the resolution, please?
Mayor, Council, thank you. Resolution 2024-21 is for an additional appropriation. Whereas at times it becomes necessary to appropriate additional funds within the approved budget as contemplated and authorized under Indiana law. It's been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was originally appropriated in the annual budget. All additional preparations require a public hearing. Therefore, be it resolved, Resolution 2024-21 is to appropriate funds from the General Coet Fire. In Fund 1101, Coet Fire, in the amount of $14,890.
Rob? There's public hearing, correct? Okay, at this time then, open the public hearing on Resolution 2024-21. Chief, public comment, please come forward, station air for the record, and keep comments to three minutes if possible. Seeing no sudden movements, we'll close the public hearing on Resolution 2024-21. Further discussion, comments from council? Okay, we're intending motion? Motion approved, is there a second?
A second.
Second for Sandra. All in favor, say aye. Does it post? All right, that is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. All right, the big ones, the ones people all came to see tonight, right? The city budget, yeah, okay. Where'd they all go? Next up will be Ordinance 2024-16, salary ordinance, this is on first reading. Tanya?
Right. Like Matt said, this is ordinance number 2024-16, fixing the salaries of city employees of Lebanon, Indiana. Be it ordained by the common council, the city of Indiana, sorry, the city of Lebanon, Indiana, two-thirds of its members being present. The following statement of salaries is the base pay for the positions listed. Full-time civilian employees of the civil city of Lebanon receive longevity pay at the rate of $75 per each year of service. Longevity pay begins after the first full year of service and does not include the current year of service when calculating the amount for each employee. Public service longevity schedule is .0075 for first-class firefighter slash patrol officer salaries and should be capped at 25 years of service. All first-class firefighters and patrolmen with five years of service or less will remain on the civilian longevity schedule until their sixth year of service. If that current employee transfers to a vacated position, the amount of the salary would be no more than the amount listed in said ordinance plus the longevity of the employee transferring to said vacancies. And here are the following salaries for the motor vehicle, motor vehicle department, is what this says. Let's go with MVH. It is $721,072. Parks Department is $1,161,737. The above rates apply to a 35 to 40-hour work week. However, when extreme emergencies arise, requiring the above name and employee, employees to work more than 40 hours per week as intended, they shall be compensated accordingly by the federal standard, Federal Labor Standards Act and the city's overtime policy. This section does not apply to department heads. And we move on to the planning department, 802,200. Historic Commission, $6,000. Police Department, $3,147,457. Fire Department, $2,608,060. Clerk Treasurers Office, 309,582. Mayor's Office, 137,148. Community Development, 100,920. Engineering, 166,765. Lit Public Safety for Fire is $1,090,260. Lit Public Safety for Police is $960,926. City Court is $10,500. Stormwater is $537,409. City Council Members is $85,000. The annual salaries for Board of Works Members is $3,600. City Plan Commission is $9,600. Board of Zoning Appeals, $6,000. Park Board, $3,600. Plan Commission, Zoning, and Park Board Members are only compensated for regularly scheduled meetings they attend. And once we read this into second reading, this will take place January 1st, 2025.
Okay.
That's the first reading.
It's been run on first reading. Any discussion, comments from council? Well, I appreciated the process the council went through. Obviously, there's a lot of challenges, certainly from a staffing standpoint, so I appreciate all the hard work and commitment the council shared. Frankly, investing in our, our biggest asset, which is our employees. And so obviously, after working with them the last nine years, I've been humbled with their dedication and their commitment to our community. So I think getting them to a point where they are competitive and reflective of their peers in other communities, I think is a huge step for our, for our city. So appreciate the council's hard work on that, so. All right, that's first reading. Is there any public comment on that? Okay, we'll take that up at our next meeting, which will be October 28th, at 15:00 p.m. Next up will be Ordinance 2024-17. This is concerning the salaries of elected officials. This is also first reading.
Yes, an ordinance fixing the salaries of elected officials of the city of Lebanon, beginning January 1st, 2025. Be it ordained by the common council, two-thirds of its members being present. The maximum salaries of the following elected officials of the city of Lebanon are as follows. Mayor, $73,671. Clerk Treasurer, $78,582. Common Council, $85,000. In addition to the funds paid by the civil city as set out in Section 2, which I just read. The following elected and appointed officers are to be paid from the funds of the municipal utilities are as follows. Mayor, $35,673. Clerk Treasurer, $20,450. Deputy Clerk Treasurer, $31,500. And this will take effect after the second reading, January 1st, 2025.
Any questions, concerns from council? Any public comment? Okay, again, we'll take that up at our next meeting, which will be on second reading, which will be October 28th. All right, next item up, well, I guess this is the big one, Ordinance 2024-18, the 2025 budget, and this is on first reading.
Again, ordinance 2024-18, be it ordained by the Lebanon City Council that for expenses of the Lebanon Civil City for the year ending December 31st, 2025, the sums herein specified are hereby appropriated and ordered set apart out of several funds herein named and for the purposes herein specified. the purposes herein specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year unless otherwise expressly stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, for purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of the Lebanon Civil City, the property tax levies and the property tax rates are herein specified and included herein. Budget Form 4B for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government and Finance. And I will read the funds and their to-be-adopted budget amounts. Casino Riverboat is $93,000. The general fund is $15,443,897. Debt service is $145,942. Debt payment is $1,750,000. Bond number three, $372,47. Bond five, $435,350. Fire pension, $322,410. Police pension, $196,735. Local road and street, $331,719. Motor vehicle highway, $1,077,928. Park and Recreation, $1,720,512. Park bond, $384,932. Cumulative capital improvements, $25,758. Cumulative capital development, $931,394. Stormwater bond, $501,593. Sanitation, $1,7749. The, the next funds I'm going to read are not reviewed by DLGF, and they are home-ruled funds. Food and beverage, $1,700,000. Public safety, $3,571,716. American Rescue Plan, $439,444. Park non-reverting is $100,000. Police continuing ed non-reverting is $68,000. Sidewalk 50/50 plan for non-reverting is $5,000. Code enforcement non-reverting is $7,000. MVH restricted is $352,404. Planning and zoning non-restricted is $350,000. Fire fund for non-reverting is $52,000. Fire training fund is $4,000, and parks miscellaneous is $12,000. That ends the reading for the ordinance.
Thank you, Tanya.
Yep.
And again, would express my appreciation for the council. This was a lot of hard work with this. Certainly, there's a lot of things happening in the city, and they always say your budget reflects your priorities. And again, I think we're investing in our community's future and also our, our, you know, important asset of our staff. So appreciate all the diligence the council put in this budget. Any other public, any other comments from council? Well, we, yeah, we can get to them. Okay. Any public comment concerning ordinance 2014-18? Okay. Ordinance been round on first reading. We'll take that up at our next meeting, which again will be October 28th at 7:15 p.m. Okay, and finally, we have ordinance 2024-19. These are general obligation bonds. This is from Rob, if you'll take that over. Probably introduce a little bit.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, council. Some of you may recall, so this is what we call a general obligation bond. This council has done this previously in the past, where the goal to keep the tax levy similar to what it's been in the years past, and in order to also allow the city to be able to have some projects that are on perhaps the wish list that may not have been in there to be able to fund. And in particular, working with Baker Tilly, they've come up with the amount of $1,500,000 that would be able to maintain the levy approximately to what it is currently, allow the city to work to, with some projects involving streetscaping, street lighting, and other capital improvements and costs related to it, that'd be project costs. And so that's what this is. There'll also be a public hearing, there'll be two readings on it. I'll highlight it. It's several pages that you've seen, and for the most part, it gets pretty much into the weeds in the bond documents, so I'm certainly happy to answer any questions. So ordinance 2024-19 authorizes the issuance of general obligation bonds for the purposes of providing funds to pay the cost of certain capital improvements within the city and related expenses on account of the issuance and the sale of the bonds and appropriating the proceeds from the sale of such bonds. So this council is authorized, again, to issue bonds, as you know. This council now determines it's necessary in a proper exercise to finance all or a portion of the cost to construct for the acquisition, installation, and equipping of certain capital improvements within the city, including but not limited to streetscaping, street lighting improvements, and related expenses within that, and that's all defined as a project. The estimates of the cost of the project will be advertised, bids will be received, and based upon the estimates, the cost of the project, including expenses, will be an amount up to $1,500,000. Council finds it does not have sufficient funds available or provided for in the existing budget and tax levy, which may be applied. So it determines that it's advisable to authorize the issuance of these general obligation bonds, again, in the amount not to exceed $1,500,000. Again, as I mentioned, there'll be a public hearing for this. The rest of the recitals go on to talk about the 2% rule, and it goes through the constitutional debt limit, which this does not get to. And so that's what the, going on to page two, what the wherashes go into. So therefore be it resolved, the council finds and determines, and I'll hit the highlights again on the section one, talks about the determination to proceed to fund the issuance of the bonds in the amount of $1 million, not to exceed $1,500,000. And it goes on for several pages, actually, to talk about that. Again, there's a maturity of January 1, 2026, so this is a short-term obligation for it. And it also goes through, it discusses what the clerk treasurer's authorized to do, what the bonds will have, basically the forms of them and the descriptions. And this goes on all the way to page seven. So page seven, you'll have the form of a bond is attached as Exhibit A that you've seen. Section three talks about the sale of the bonds and the advertisement, again, the interest rates. And I was, should have added that Baker Tilly has worked with the city and the public finance team to come up with these numbers and the interest rates not to exceed. So we get into section four on page eight, talks about the preparation of the bonds. Clerk Treasurers authorized directed to have the bonds prepared, and the mayor and the clerk treasurer authorized directed to execute the bonds as described in this ordinance. Section five talks about the defeasance or the payment of the, those bonds. Section six talks about the deposit, application of the bond proceeds. Section seven talks about a covenant to levy tax, the bond payment fund. And section eight gets into some nuances with the covenants and the representations. Again, that goes on for several pages. Page 11, section nine, again, addresses the debt limit is not exceeded. And section 10, as I mentioned, is, this is an additional appropriation, which a public hearing will be required. The rest of the provisions on the next two pages are the typical provisions that you would see, the severability provision, if anything is declared to be invalid, the remaining part of the ordinance remains in effect, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect on its adoption and any procedures required by law.
Thank you, Rob. Any questions, concerns from council? Any public comment concerning ordinance 2024-19? Okay, seeing none. At this time, I'll open the, it's public hearing tonight, correct? This time, I'll open the public hearing on ordinance 2024-19. If you need a public comment, please come forward, station near for the record, and please keep comments to three minutes if possible. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on ordinance 2024-19, and we will take that up second reading at our next council meeting, which, believe it or not, will be October 28th at 7:15 p.m. Counsel, that concludes what I have for new business. Is there anything from you? Okay, move on to claims. We're entertaining a motion concerning the claims.
Make a motion to approve them.
Motion for the claims are second. Second from Dick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Does it post? Claims are approved. Announce this for discussion?
I had an announcement, it's just that I wanted to show you guys. I attended the fire ops training last Saturday.
Oh, very good.
And it was awesome. It was absolutely awesome. Chief Batts and, and Sam Cornick and all of them were explaining everything going on, and it was amazing. I left there, my throat hurt from all the smoke, all that stuff, I'm still getting over that, but it was a treat to go to that and to watch what these guys do every day. I have even more. It was really, really nice.
Did she pass, chief?
Did they tell you that if your mask had come off, you might have, you would have died? No, not till after? Okay. That's what they did for me when I did it a few years ago, so. Any other announcements or discussion? Just again, one of, I know it was a long night tonight, council. I appreciate everyone's thoughts, comments. Again, this is how democracy works. Again, I think we express what we feel and believe is the best interest of our citizens, and we make a decision, so respect everyone's opinions, and I think we'll continue to work together moving forward. You know, democracy doesn't have to be unanimous. Frankly, it's better when it's not, and so I appreciate everyone's thoughts and discussions tonight.
One thing I want to ask is, we had, if you remember, we had a feasibility study done on the police department.
Yeah.
Okay? We've not really officially had that presented to us.
Yes.
Okay, is there any chance we could schedule that and have that done so we can kind of get that information out to the, to us as well, to the public as well?
We've got some pretty busy meetings coming up, but I think we can try to get that done before the end of the year. Is that fair? Is that for the end of the year?
That's fine.
I like that. Yeah, I like that.
All right, with that, we entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourners are second.
Second.
Second from Sandra. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Does it post? All right, our next city council meeting will be Monday, October 28th at 7:15 p.m. We are adjourned.